So I'm going to read the right to know checklist. As Chair of the Sanborn Regional School Board, I find that due to the state of the emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there's no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we are a public providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Sanborn Regional School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, 1646-558-8656, meeting ID 935-5738-9268, or by clicking on the following website address, B, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information to access the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the Sanborn Regional School District at www.sau17.net. C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-642-8541, or email helpdesk@saush17.net. D, adjourning the meeting if the public's unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. So starting as people appear on my screen, Larry?
My name is Larry Heath. I'm in my shop. There is nobody present with me.
Matt?
Matt Angel. I'm at my house. I'm sorry, Matt Angel, I'm at my house and there's no one here with me.
And Tom is muted.
Tom Ambrose, Superintendent of Schools. I'm here in my home office. My family's upstairs, but they're, well, they don't pay attention to me, so.
Tammy?
Tammy Mahoney. I'm at home. I'm in an office by myself.
Jamie?
Jamie Fitzpatrick. I'm in my home office alone.
Pete?
Yeah, I'm at my home in an office by myself.
Charlie?
I'm in my home, in my kitchen, by myself.
Jake?
Jake Tafford. I'm in my room.
Dawn?
Dawn Dutton. I am in a room in my home by myself.
Patty?
Patty Haynes. In my home office alone.
Welcome, Grace.
Hello. I'm Grace. I'm at home and I'm alone.
And Matthew?
Matt Malilla, Assistant Principal at the high school. I'm in a room at home alone.
And Jim Baker. And I'm in a room in my house. I'm alone. So let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Let's get a motion on the minutes of November 30th. And the second?
Second.
Okay. Any, any comments or? All right. No comments, then I'll move to approve and start the roll call vote. Larry?
Yes.
Matt? Oh, no, not Matt. Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
Pete?
Yes.
Charlie?
Hi.
Dawn?
Yes.
And yes for me. And also for the minutes of December 2nd, 2020. Any comments or changes? Okay. Roll call vote, starting with Larry?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
Pete?
Yes.
Charlie?
Hi.
Dawn?
Yes.
Yes for me as well. So Matt, the manifests have been distributed electronically. Have you gotten the signatures that you need?
I do. We're all set. Thank you very much.
Okay. And Tom, you've got some nominations. You're muted, Tom.
I keep doing that because the folks upstairs were making some noise. I'm sorry. I would like to nominate Will McCauley to a one-year position for the rest of the year to help substitute for health and wellness. Laura Frazier, school nurse. This is not a one-year position. She's filling an opening. Paige Driscoll, art teacher for a one-year position, and Alyssa Rauer for science position. Alyssa, I apologize if I didn't do your name justice. These positions are filling, most of them are filling the three that you see budgeted salary zero. That's because they're filling one-year leaves of absence due to the COVID pandemic.
Hey. We've got a, can we get a motion?
Don't move.
Okay. Second? Any discussion? All right. Roll call vote. Larry?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
Pete?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And yes for me. And then resignations.
We have one. Leslie Poreier, science teacher.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept that?
Both to approve. Second.
Second, okay. Roll call vote or discussion? Any discussion? Okay. Larry?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
Pete?
Yes.
Charlie?
Hi.
Dawn?
Yes.
And yes for me. Superintendent's report.
Good evening. I just wanted to take a minute to talk to everyone about our current COVID situation. We, we have been able to keep the Bakey School open for, for the, you know, through today, and we are planning to be open on Friday. I'll be talking to you about some adjustments to the plan for COVID-19 regarding remote versus in-person at the next board meeting. We're just revising, now that we have more experience, we need to do some revisions, and we'll bring those to you at the next meeting. I did also want to let everyone know that we currently have approximately 145 people who are on quarantine as a result of COVID cases, not actual COVID cases. It's so important just for me to continually say to everyone, it's not the number of cases that are causing the problem. We are not having school transmission of COVID from student to student. Our safety protocols are working. What we are having is a lot of people quarantining, which is making it very difficult for school to be, for us to run the schools in person. I really want to applaud the board for working hard and thinking about, and the administration. I really cannot say enough about Ryan McCluskey, Chris Snyder, Dr. Haynes, Diana Rooney, Matt Angel, Brian Stack, and Christine DeRosa for working together to pool staff to keep Bakey open. Thank you so much. So we are, we are doing everything that we can, and one of the changes that we'll want to talk about, or that we're planning to put into the plan for the next board meeting is just letting everyone know that, that should our number of staffing issues increase, we will continue to look to keep element, early elementary open as much as possible. So when we start to have staffing shortages, which we will, we, we will, we will always start by having nine through 12 remote, seven through eight, then if we have to, four through six, but our eye is always on keeping the students at Bakey in the school as much as possible. So I just wanted to thank everyone. And Patty's already completed the revisions. We'll just share them with you at the next board meeting, which is literally four school days from now. So it's not, we just, we just don't quite, we're not quite ready to do that tonight. So thanks to everyone for all of your hard work. I did want to just remind everyone that I did make the decision for a snow day tomorrow, and we made the decision to have our first snow day be a real snow day. And so I have asked our students to please go outside, make snowmen, shovel the yard, shovel your deck, shovel your porch until you're exhausted. Take a nap. Drink some hot cocoa, build some Legos, and hopefully read a book, but please, take a break from screen time. Everyone needs a break from screen time. And I think that that's my message for tomorrow. We, we are developing a plan for snow days to have a more clearly defined plan as we move forward, but for this one, we wanted kids to be able to get outside and play. And that's important. So Jake, I'm expecting some really healthy pictures from you with some really good activities. You're old enough to run the snow blower, so that means you can make a bigger snowman. And Jamie and Dawn, I'm assuming that you'll lead the charge with your children's photographs tomorrow. Keep, keeping it real. If I can get mine up, mine will be outside snowboarding in the backyard, so I'll try to get a good video for everyone tomorrow. So that concludes the superintendent's report for this evening. I did want to relate to the board the gratitude of the staff. A number of staff members have said to me that they are extremely grateful that we're not having school next Monday and Tuesday, that the kids are ready for vacation, and it's been a really long haul this year to get to this point, and so I just wanted to reiterate to the board a message of thanks for, for, for doing that. I think it was the right decision and it, it really, it's good that we're wrapping it up on Friday, I think is the way I'd put it. Patty, do I get a thumbs up on that? Matt, Grace? It's, we definitely, we're definitely ready for, for a pause. Thanks very much.
Thank you. So committee reports. Can you raise your hand if you have a committee report? Okay, so let's start. Which, which is policy? We have, no, we don't have a policy. ISA, Tammy?
ISA's, well, short. We met just prior to this meeting at 4:30. And I will report our meeting at the next, at our next board meeting, but our next ISA meeting is on January 20th at 4:30. Can you hear me?
Yes. All right. Facilities met today at 3:30, and I'll give the report at the next meeting. Our next facilities meeting is January 20th at 3:30 PM. Jamie?
Yeah, finance. I kind of reported out on finance and gave the highlights, so I won't read through my three pages of minutes, but I do want to take a point to, no, I did put in the, say note, and it reads as follows. No, at the school board meeting following the subcommittee meeting, Mrs. Tammy Mahoney raised the point of order the finance subcommittee can recommend spending to the school board, but does not have the authority to prove this on their own. The motion was then raised for approval by the full school board. Mrs. Mahoney is correct as regards the authorization of the future finance subcommittee. We will in the future ensure that motions are to recommend and not to authorize, and I thank Mrs. Mahoney for pointing this out.
Thank you. Dawn, which committee are you reporting on?
So Personnel. I forgot last week. Completely forgot to report out on it last time. So Personnel, we met November 19th at 3 o'clock, and it was a fairly short meeting. We did meet to discuss adding or creating the new position, which has already happened. And then we talked about goals because we haven't really had time to meet. It's one of those committees that because the superintendent is our only real employee, there just wasn't a lot going on, so that one has been canceled a lot. So we talked about goals and we made a generalized goal. Our goal is to be here to assist our administration, including but not limited to helping develop the strategic plan, helping update job descriptions in any other ways needed. So that was, that was pretty much the gist of the meeting right there. We haven't had another one to approve minutes or anything yet, so I didn't want to do anything official, but that was the basic gist of our meeting for Personnel. And then to update, we have our next Personnel meeting, January 20th at 3:00 PM. And then for Policy, we have our next meeting, January 6th at 4:30, and there are, I believe, three policies that we need to discuss at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Larry, Public Relations?
Yes, Public Relations met on December 9th. It was a very short meeting. The meeting was remote, and the minutes were approved for a week of 10:14. We had a communication update on COVID-19. Three areas, the minutes were approved. Three areas of COVID-19 to allow the school to open. One of them was the county level, the transmission level, and the staff that is available to hold the school. It was mentioned that all of these worked together, and we also had a review on the annual report. Meeting was adjourned at 4:53, and that's it.
Thank you. Tammy, anything on budget or is that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah. The budget, well, the budget, it's budget season, so the Budget Committee has twice since we last met. They met on December 3rd, and they met on December 10th. Their next meeting is tomorrow night. It'll be a remote Zoom meeting at 7:00 PM. Meeting last Thursday, that was mostly a planning meeting to prepare for the public hearing, the presentation of the public hearing. The school board has jurisdiction over the default budget. I will be commenting on the default budget. Prior meeting on December 3rd, they voted on a budget number. The budget is an agenda item, so I'm not, you don't need to go into a lot of detail. They did increase the number that we had voted on the night prior by $5,657.70. And I guess I'll, we'll just have more discussion on that when we get to it in the agenda.
Good, thank you. Student Council report, Jake?
All right, it's pretty short. Teacher appreciation was today, and we had snacks and coffee available for all teachers, and also National Society is having a warm clothing drive, and donations can be given and to a bin located in the vestibule at the high school. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, so now we have a math SAT data presentation by Matt, Matilda, and Grace Evans.
Matt Malila.
Malila. Sorry, sorry, Matt.
It's been butchered for decades.
My bifocals.
That's okay. And can I share my screen?
Yeah.
Yeah, Daniel would like, would be the one to give you the.
Oh, yeah, I need, I need the ability to host.
You should have that ability.
Oh, there it is. There we go. Okay, so. All right, so, yeah. Grace and I, you know, are here tonight just to to give our analysis of the SAT results. This assessment was taken just a couple months ago on October 14th, 2020, by our seniors. Typically, this assessment is taken in the spring when, when they're juniors, but of course, due to COVID, they weren't able to take it at that time. So there's about a seven, you know, seven-month lag with, you know, no in-person math instruction during that time. But as, you know, prior to beginning this presentation tonight, I just want to acknowledge and thank Grace for putting this slide presentation together and crunching the data for us. Just wanted to give her credit for that, so we'll begin now.
So we'll talk through a couple of things. What data we have available, the high level of scores and benchmarks in comparison to state and national averages, and then we'll go beyond that high level to think about some distributions and tracking, and we'll talk really about our recommendations and next steps.
So just a couple things about the SAT before we begin, you know, and what makes a kind of a unique assessment, something that maybe, you know, our kids not all that familiar with, depending upon if they've taken a practice assessment or not, but it's a, it's obviously quick, it's a timed assessment. Some questions are designed to be tricky, to really test the students' understanding of the concepts. Many of the questions, which is a good thing, really contain ninth-grade math. That's really just dressed up with some complex terminology. The data analysis questions are really common sense and really demonstrating its ability to think critically and problem solve, which I'm all for as a, as a former science teacher, and I've saw, I saw a lot of similarities between that, those questions, because I've taken the math SAT myself, and actually, this, this most recent one, and the New Hampshire Science Assessment, the SAS Assessment, so come back to that another time. But lastly, you know, another key point to make about this assessment is it really requires the students to be able to mentally sort through questions by type of math and then the level of difficulty, which Grace will get to next.
Yeah, so what you'll see in the, the data that's reported out is questions of three types. Heart of Algebra, which is that ninth-grade math of linear equations and systems. Problem solving and data analysis are quantitative literacy questions about surveys and some basic probability. Passport to Advanced Math gets to a bit more of 11th grade content with quadratics and some cubics. And you'll see those three categories reported out in the data later. There's also some questions that fall under additional topics in math. That's a really small category, so they don't separate scores into that category. And then every question is rated as easy, medium, or hard.
So in terms of available data, unfortunately, we discovered that it's, it's limited, and there's, there's a change I'll talk about in, in a minute, but so it's really difficult for us to look at trends over time, trends in how our students have done. As you can see from this, this table, you know, the class of 2021, that's a class that just took the assessment in October. We have their scores, the benchmarks, question analysis, which, going back to Grace's previous slide, would be how they do in the Heart of Algebra, how they do in problem solving, Passport, Math. We don't have the actual specific questions. Hopefully, we can get those, because that's always interesting to see how they did on individual questions. The most recent class to take assessment back in spring of 2019, the class of 2020, we have their scores and their bench, the benchmarks, but that's it. And then College Board decided to, you know, no longer maintain scores from 2019 back. And everybody was surprised by that. So we're looking to get the data maybe from the state. We don't have it now. But that being said, we can, you know, with what we have with the work Grace has done with the math department so far, you know, we can make recommendations and couple strategies for improving our performance on the Math SAT moving forward, so it's not like, this is not an excuse. This is not, you know, you know, we don't have the data, so we can't make recommendations.
These are the parts that most people have probably seen publicly. This is the average score, the last of test takers, and the percentage of our students who met benchmark in each content area. The benchmark in reading and writing is 480. The benchmark in math is quite a bit higher at 530, and that's one reason why you see a discrepancy in the percentage of students who met benchmark in reading and math. The benchmark is literally higher in math. So we wanted to acknowledge these numbers, but also to say, we're going to put them in context and start to unpack them, because we know that this fall was very weird, that the students in this graduating class have had a very different experience than, than previous years of students. So we want to kind of go beyond just this high level into some more detail.
So how do we compare to the state and nationally? So some of this data was in the previous screen. Use my cursor here. Grace pointed out the, the benchmark for the evidence-based reading and writing. It's 480 for the math, it's 530. And as you can see, you know, in, in 2019, our school performance was comparable to the nation, still below the state. And then we had, you know, a drop this year, especially, I mean, maybe, I'm sorry, not in the reading and writing performance, because that went from 54 to 55%. The nation and state average scores went up. So we're lagging in, in reading and writing for 2020. Math, you know, again, pretty big discrepancy between our school performance on this assessment and the state's, and, and the nation's for that matter. You know, back in 2019, we're fairly close to the national average, and ours went down, national average went up. The last two columns, I'm not going to get into, really just shows percentages for students who met both reading and writing math or met neither. And again, this slide show will be shared with the public and with the board, you know, at a later time this week.
So what you see here are the distributions of the scores for the current seniors and the class of 2020, who just graduated in the spring. The pink bar on each is that 530, the, the benchmark for career and college readiness. And so all of the scores to the, to the right are above that pink bar are the students who met benchmark. The 2021 distribution is smaller because we had fewer students take the test this year because they could opt out. So the difference in, in that vertical axis shouldn't alarm anyone. It's just because we had fewer students taking the test this fall. But what's interesting to note here is to look at the shape of the distribution and to see, you know, where did our students fall, and how many students were, were falling in that upper quadrant, and how many were were closer to the average or below average? And that's going to let us in future analysis think about how we might set different goals and set different courses for improvement for these different sort of categories of students.
So the next two slides show how our students did on the 2021, sorry, our students in the class of 2021, and the class 2020 did on the SAT the last two years by course. So obviously, our, our students follow different tracks. They're not, they don't all take the same progression of math classes. And on the left-hand column here, you see the courses listed. Obviously, you know, and these are average scores for the students that knows courses, so for AP Calculus, there are 12 students, and it gives their, their average scores. The key at the top right shows in green the, the areas and that students met or exceeded the benchmark. The yellow or orangish color is approaching, and then that sort of purple color is students who need to strengthen their skills or, you know, were not near meeting benchmark. So obviously, if you, if you look at 2021, which is a class that just took it in October, and then the class that took it in the spring of 2019, which would be the class of 2020, you know, clearly, which is not a surprise, there's a correlation between level of math class and performance on the Math SAT. There are some interesting things to point out, though, which Grace and I discussed. Heart of Algebra. If you look at some of our top, you know, math students, but, you know, didn't meet on average, didn't meet or exceed proficiency as a group for 2020 or 2021, so you know, there's things, there's, there's a lot of things you can get here. We're not going to, you know, break this down tonight, but you know, these are things that especially Grace has looked into.
So recommendations fall into two categories. The short term for this year's test takers, the current 11th graders, and then medium to long-term for future test takers. And all of this work is going to take place collaboratively between And all of this work is going to take place collaboratively between administrators and teachers. We're going to think about how to be really intentional about the PSAT in January and have that be a day that students think about as training for the SAT in the spring. And using that baseline data to set improvement plans when we do a specific SAT preparation in the spring. We will make a plan as a math team to think about how we want to prepare students for the SAT. In typical years, there has not been a lot of formal preparation for that test. We're not going to completely take over math courses. But to think about how we, how can we embed SAT preparation in math courses, particularly in math three, where just over half of 11th graders are currently enrolled. And, and then during F L T as well. And all this is going to happen really through content-specific professional development. So the math team working together to look at data, reflect, make plans, and see how things are changing. And then we have a larger list of things to think about for the medium to long-term. One thing we want to think about is by the end of this school year, investigating adopting a high-quality, standards-aligned curriculum. And when we're talking about scores of this type, we have a lot of room to grow, really thinking about the need to improve the core of our instruction and the core of what's happening in math courses. And that starts with what is the math that we're teaching in those courses? We would also like to establish clear goals for each course and criteria for passing. We're seeing that kids have really different experiences at Sanborn based on the different tracks that they're following. And we'll be able to tighten that up by thinking about the goal of each course and how students move through that, to have some more objective criteria for how students are placed in math courses and have those criteria be balanced with recommendations. We've started to, and we're going to continue to refine our grading and assessment practices to ensure that we're teaching for mastery, right? It's a pedagogical question to be, to be teaching in a way to ensure that students are mastering content. As has mentioned in subcommittees and elsewhere, we're going to look at the high school master schedule and think about the amount of time students are spending in math class and in other core content areas. We'd like to develop a building-wide instructional focus, meaning to, to set a stake in the ground that as a building, we're going to focus on instruction and then build structures and routines that reinforce that focus at every level. The pandemic has put a lot in the way of us talking about instruction and folks are spending their time on, on masks and dividers and contact tracing. But even as we move through the rest of this year and out of the pandemic, we want to build in structures that allow us to maintain that laser focus on teaching and learning. And we're going to need to either find or create intermediate measures of performance so that we know how we're doing and we can make adjustments along the way without waiting for the SAT every year with the 11th graders. This work is going to happen between administrators and teachers. We're going to be focusing on instruction during early release days, professional development days, and P L C time. So when you hear folks advocating for early release and for, for time built into the schedule for professional development, this is the kind of work that we're talking about. And with that, I'm not sure what kind of time we have, but we would happily take some of your questions.
Can we go back to full screen or faces so I can see whose hands are up? Thank you.
There we go. Is that good?
All right, so who's got questions or comments? All right, I've got one. I understood that we had a, we had a program through Khan Academy where the, the students could prep for the SAT. Did we do that this year?
I'm not sure that we did this fall.
Okay. Is that program still going to be available?
That's a good question. I'm not sure, but we'll look into it.
Okay, and I'd like to know in the past, how many students have participated in that?
If we can find that out, I know I've heard teachers talking about it as something they've done in the past. We, we can inquire and find out.
I'm also glad to know that you're going to be looking at the, the time that students are, are actually in math instruction. Because I, I think that needs to be very closely looked at and probably added to.
That was discussed at the last I S A meeting. I would encourage the board to watch that video later.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Jamie? Jamie?
Yeah, I can probably come up with a question or two, I would suppose.
I'm shocked. Thank.
So we, we have questions. I was always under the understanding we could get questions. Is there something going on with how we're not being able to get questions even from last year? Because I would think that that'd be very important for us to be able to know what are the types of things that our students are struggling with in terms of being able to answer math or English? So that we can then build instructional programs around making sure those concepts are grasped.
Yeah, pretty disturbing. We asked Heidi Levin about it and she, she contacted college board directly and she was blown away that they just, it was like poof, they just stopped sharing all the historic data. And I know that in my experience and, I mean, heck, even applying for this job in the spring, I was looking at all that data and it was tremendous. And I was looking at question analysis and then, and it was, was really informative. And then suddenly it's just disappeared. It's like, it's, it's very frustrating. Heidi, Heidi Levin would echo that comment.
Yeah, so we're working on that, Jamie. We're going to be following up with college board to see what, what else we can find. I know Tom's been really interested in that. We may have other data we can get from the state. But like that said earlier, there is also a lot of analysis and improvement we can do even without that data. When we're talking about, you know, 20% of students meeting benchmark, we have an enormous area of growth. We're not really talking about fine tuning exactly which kind of question kids aren't doing well at. We're talking about a need to strengthen the core of our instruction and to strengthen students' mastery of core skills.
Tom?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to reiterate that, Jamie, that was my first question when I met with the team to go over this presentation. And I told Grace and Matt that if they can't get the data through Heidi, that I would like them to let me know so that I can personally contact the college board. And sometimes the superintendent calling puts some pressure on it. The college board is a massive organization and they, they kind of play by their own rules. I don't understand why that information's not available and we're not, I just want everyone to know, we're not letting it go. So we, we are not accepting no as an answer. We, we want that information.
I, I do appreciate the answer also, that when you're at 20%, there's a whole mountain of stuff that you can start looking at. You don't have to, you don't have to look at nuances as much, but still, it's helpful information.
Yeah, I've been in a district where we, we focused on science and we did some very simple things. And our, our scores went up 20 points in one year. And it wasn't, it, it was shockingly simple. Prior to, just before that, we had a school-wide goal to improve reading, writing, you know, ELA. And we took it on as a school and our numbers went up. I don't remember the percentage because this was about a decade ago. But it wasn't just up to the English teachers and social studies. It was math, uh, science teachers and everyone took it on. So there's a lot of, a lot of simple things we can do if we, you know, you know, take the right approach and pull together as a team that'll, that'll, that'll improve these, these scores and our students' performance.
I, I want to reiterate to everyone, parents that are listening, community members, it is, this has been two, two or three of the best hours I've had at being superintendent at Sanborn. I know that we need to talk about budget tonight, but I've spent the last three hours talking about instruction. And that is really inspiring for teachers and kids and for everyone. And so I think that one thing I would challenge everyone to do is to build more time in to talk about instruction and what makes instruction stronger and what moves our organization forward with regard to helping kids learn. Because the reality is that if instruction is really solid, school's way more fun. And I, I think fun is important, right? I don't think life should be, I, I mean, I enjoy my job. I, I don't want life to be unfun for our kids. So I, I, I think this is great. And I just wanted to thank Grace and Matt for doing such a fantastic job pulling together this first presentation. It is not the last by any means, it's the beginning. So I, I really think that they've done a great job of starting out. And the administrative team has made a commitment, despite COVID and everything going on, to plan time to talk about instruction. Because Brian Stack said it really well. He said, you know, if you, if you keep, if, something is always going to get in the way of talking about instruction. And so we're, we're really making a conscious effort to do that. Thank you, Matt and Grace for your hard work.
So in that regard, what, what are the next steps and what kind of a timeline do you have?
Well, if you go back to the slides, Grace can show you, they actually had a slide for that, Jim.
Do you want next steps for data analysis or next steps for improving instruction?
Yes, improving instruction.
Yeah. So there's a couple of different places where I'm operating right now. So I spend most of my time with the high school teachers in coaching. So I'm kind of operating in three different places. I've got weekly time with the high school math teachers, weekly time with a combination of 11th and 12th grade math, science teachers. And then I'm doing some one-on-one and small group coaching with individual teachers. And across all those places, we're focusing on how we can strengthen instruction. It's not all SAT connected right now, because it's across all the grades. So it's about like, what does it look like to teach in a way that leads toward student mastery of content? And folks have been excited about that work and really excited to dig in. And they're, they're starting already to see small results with their students. As a math team, we've been talking about grading and assessment. And how do we build in habits for ourselves as teachers that help us know when students have mastered something? And how do we give effective feedback that helps them know what they've mastered? So there's a couple of different levels where things are already in motion and we're going to keep building on those things throughout the year. And then my vision is that as we get closer into the spring, that will get SAT specific. So as a team, as a math team, we'll, we'll take a look and we'll make a really clear plan for how to do about four or five weeks of SAT specific preparation. But from here until then, it's about building the core, both for kids and for teachers.
And then as far as the data gathering part of, part about it, is that the slide? The Tom reference? No, just what's the timeline for the, in the, the data gathering?
Well, that, that's going to be ongoing, Jim. I mean, if you, if you go back and read the slides again, they gave short-term steps, long-term steps in the slides. And, and the short-term steps are more immediate about literally in the next four months, analyzing data with the PSAT, looking at the instructional practices and trying to prep students to do better on the test intentionally, right? Planning, that's literally in the next three months. There's a huge arc of things that, that was covered in the I S A meeting. And I recommend that you watch the I S A meeting to get a sense of the bigger picture of the plan for the high school master schedule, the course offerings, the amount of time. And then there's also a, a big piece around analyzing and looking at the curriculum scope and sequence and realigning that. And that's seven to 12, that's not nine to 12. That's the, the whole scope and sequence of what happens to get kids to their junior year. That's also really honestly pre-K six with buying the new math program that we're working on. So I think that, that it's really a, a, there are, it's a year and a half process of trying to get everything ready. But there are some really great short-term recommendations that were on their slide in their presentation. And there are also some bigger, longer-term over the next year steps. And we're really hoping to have a very solid, a plan figured out for the schedule and the work by next November, right? So you'll see that in the school board meeting when they present the plan that was shared in I S A.
And the I S A meeting is on YouTube, so anybody in the public can look at that meeting.
And as far as data analysis, sir, that'll be as fast as we can track it down from the college board. I would love to be digging into those question analyses as would the team. So if we have that data, that'll be a project that we tackle very quickly. If it takes longer to get the data, then it's going to take longer to do that. But like I said, we can also develop some in-house, more informal measurements that allow us to see where our students are and, and to be able to do that kind of cycle of inquiry work, even if the college board remains intransigent.
And what about ongoing assessments that we've been doing for years, like pace and that sort of thing? Are those helpful at all in this regard?
So what ended up happening, and we also touched on that in I S A today, is what ended up happening this past year is a lot of that was suspended because we went to remote learning. But there's some data in there that we could look at that would be longitudinal for some of these students that would give us some information. We could also look at their performance in classes to see how they're doing, just in class, how they're applying the math. So there is a lot of stuff for us to look at and it's, you know, it's an iceberg. And we chip away at it a little bit at a time and we'll get, get to some answers. But we're looking also at ways to take care of the immediate needs first so that we can address that while we're also looking at what is the instructional process need to be going all the way back to preschool, like Tom was saying, to figure out how to just shore up the whole system.
And the, the new math program that we're, that we're funding in the new budget, what's the timeline for that?
So right now, they're in, they're in the middle of just looking at a few more aspects of that using the iMet, the tool that they're using to analyze, to see how it aligns to different standards. Beginning in January, they will be inviting in different publishers that they've sort of narrowed down to come in and talk to them about what they've got. I'm about to have a meeting with Donna Danelle on Friday now to make sure we know who's coming in, that they know what dates they're coming in. Teachers will then be piloting different lessons with that. And I will have information to share with the I S A committee in March with my recommendation and a lengthy report.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Jamie?
Can I get a copy of the slide deck, please?
Yeah.
Yep. We're going to, we're going to actually, yeah, we'll, we'll put this together and we're going to add the audio. So we'll, we'll reproduce the audio that went along with our slides and we'll share it with the community.
For this one, Matt, you might not have to do that process that I did earlier this week. If you talk to Gordon, he might be able to just cut, cut the, um, um, cut the part out of the board meeting into its own little video. But you need me to show you how I did those slides earlier this week. You're well, I'm, I'm happy to show you that.
Okay, cool.
Jamie, we'll just shrink the slide deck right away so you have it for reference. But we wanted to create a little video that had a narration like the one I did earlier this week so that when community members read it, they get the context.
Yeah, no, that'd be good. If you just get it over to me sooner, then it gives me something to do over Christmas.
Just don't text me about it on Christmas Day, Jamie. I'm happy to help you, but you are superhuman and I'd like to have some eggnog.
All Shirley Temple version of Eggnog, Tom?
Yep, always.
So if there's no other comments or questions, then thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Food service. Matt?
Yeah, okay, let me bring it up. Okay, so basically what has gone on is our food service company has some of their operations from Fremont to our high school. So we're feeding students out of the high school for Fremont. We're also claiming those students as being served from the district and receiving federal and state aid for those students. They want us to do a memorandum of, of understanding, just documenting the kind of service we're providing. I am recommending that the school board authorize us to sign this memorandum of understanding. Because not only do we service Fremont for this particular instance, Fremont can also turn around and produce food for our district. If we reverse this MOU, we'd have to sign another MOU for the reverse. However, we really want to work together with Fremont and try to come up with some sort of mechanism to, to make it easy for the two of us to serve food to all the kids. So so far, this MOU has been approved by the Fremont School Board and it's just waiting for this board to approve it and authorize Tom to, to sign it. And it's just waiting for this board to approve it and authorize Tom to uh, to sign it.
Has everybody had a chance to look at that? So we may need some time to look at that. Uh, do we have, do we have a motion, any, any discussion?
Oh, move.
Jamie?
Well, just, I mean, I'm just reading through it now, I've been in the other meetings, um. It looks pretty nondescript, Matt, it looks like, all right, we have a kitchen. And we will serve you meals that are up to the par for the meals that we serve our own kids and we will get the reimbursement from that, the, it's not clear. So do, do we get, we don't get a hundred percent reimbursement, so if we're only getting the reimbursement, what happens with the differential?
Um, we're actually getting a hundred percent reimbursement. Every, every meal right now is free um, in this COVID situation.
But if we, if we sign this and then it wasn't free anymore, does that mean we as a district picking up that differential and paying for the Fremont schools lunches or no?
That would be correct.
Wait, 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 wait.
It does specify for the emergency COVID period, though.
Hold on, plus for the emergency COVID period, I think we need to be.
Yes, that's.
And when.
But no, that Jamie, Jamie is saying it correctly, where during this emergency COVID period, we're getting paid a hundred percent for all the meals that we serve. So currently, the financial impact to the district is zero. If the, the federal government or the state changes their mind and reduces that aid, we'd have to go and turn to Fremont. And them to pay for their share of the cost, okay?
Right.
Currently.
Does the MOU expire if the COVID, if the government changes their practices?
The MOU expires at the end of the school year.
But, but it's important to remember, if, if the government stops subsidizing the lunches, the students have to pay the difference. So it's not, right now, we're not charging the kids the money that we normally charge them for lunch because the government's paying it. When the, when this stops, the kids have to pay or Fremont has to pay. We're not, what I'm trying to say is that yes, the cost becomes something that the district has to collect. But we would collect it either from Fremont or the students. But the problem is that they, they didn't have enough capacity for their K program. So they asked us to provide it for them and the state is asking us for documentation, saying that we're doing that.
So is there a re, um, is there a reimbursement sort of menu of what that would be if the state stops reimbursing us? What are, what our financial relationship with Fremont would be?
Yeah, well, it goes back to the same pro, I would assume, and Matt, tell me if I'm wrong, but we have a cost per student for lunch for the district. So one for K five and one through six through eight. And they would be subject to that same charge as if they were buying lunch at the cafeteria. So like Jim, when you go to buy lunch, Matt, go ahead and explain that part.
Um, I, I, just to simplify it, right now, that um, that program for the COVID funding is approved through the end of the school year, okay? So the risk during this contract period, I think is really minimal. It would, it would be if the federal government came out and said, oh, we're not going to be doing this anymore. Then we'd have to contact the uh, Fremont School District and say, okay, um, either you're going to have to pick up and start preparing your own meal. Or you're going to have to start paying us for the differential between our reimbursement rate and what um, our meal costs are.
I think what the board's asking, Matt, is that they want that in the MOA, they want that stated clearly.
I mean, it would be better to be in there, I mean, I, I don't doubt that. I, I, I don't expect the, the incoming administration is going to change that, but God only knows with Washington what the heck is going on. And I don't expect that we'd really have any problems with Fremont, uh, but it's, it's always better to a clear understanding of the minds that if those things should happen, then we clearly wouldn't be responsible for covering that delta for their children in their schools.
Schools, it's just knowing what the expectations are for everybody.
Yeah, I think the clear, we have to be explicitly clear because the last thing that I want is for this to muddy the water with Fremont. And I think that's pretty much the essence of, and, and I don't want us on the hook for any money. So both, both things are relationships. So Matt, does it have a component that says that, you know, or could we, could the board approve pending the addition of that language that clarifies that should the federal government stop the complete subsidy, Fremont would be responsible for the difference for their students?
Um, yes, they can, and I would recommend that they would do that if they, so it in there. I do have to let them know that the state has threatened to uh, withhold um, funding until this agreement is signed.
Yeah, we.
So.
Yeah.
I mean, is of the essence.
So Matt, you're asking for board approval this evening?
Yes, please.
Can I get clarity about their withholding funding, funding of what?
The, the, the lunch program.
Yeah, so basically we get reimbursed after the fact. And so we submit up to the state all of our meal accounts and then they send us a check.
Yeah.
Right now, we're funding all the meals. Um, pretty soon, they turn off the spigot and um, until this agreement is signed. So we may not get paid for um, January or February until it's, until it's approved.
I don't, I don't think we should have to wait that long, I mean, it would seem to me that this would be something that could be done tomorrow. Scenario.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Okay, so it seems that we just.
There, there is a section line that does say the following, so for people that haven't read it. Both parties agree to discuss any proposed changes to this MOU in good faith. And if agreement is made to implement such changes as soon as practical, so there is at least something that doesn't, it's not really clear, but at least says that you gotta operate in good, it'd be kind of hard to argue good faith and, and say, but you have to pay for our kids. Go ahead, Mo.
Yeah, Matt?
I, I do have to say Fremont has been super, super good about its process. They have been a excellent partner to work with.
Uh, Pete, I'd like to have you add that statement, Matt, just, you can have a, a, you know, whoever you want to have crafted. But the essence of the statement needs to be that the board approved the document with the addition of a statement that clarifies that if the federal government changed the funding mechanism, Fremont has to pay the difference for their children. So I, I, I'm asking someone on the board to make a friendly amendment to the motion.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that, the old adage, if it ain't written down, it didn't happen. And right now, we have nothing to, to hold them, their feet to the fire, saying, uh, you know, the federal government just backed out. Well, you're responsible for Fremont because uh, you signed the MOU. There has to be something in that MOU that says if the federal government backs out or whatever, you know, the funding stops, then Fremont's responsible for paying for their children. So you want that, you want that in a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna make a motion that should the, should, should funding cease, Fremont will be responsible for funding the, the meals for their students. And I, that should be put into the MOU, it's very simple addition.
Second.
Or you could just say that if the government pulls out, the agreement is suspended.
Well, that's why I said if funding stops rather than if the government pulls up, funding stops, who knows?
You could just say the funding stops, the agreement is void.
Or is reduced. If the funding stops, or is reduced, Fremont pays their portion for their students.
Yeah, that was a motion that was made, you have to sit there and amend it if you're going to change it.
Well, I just amended that motion, my motion.
Can we get a second on the amended emotion?
Second.
All right, so any other discussion?
Did you say amended emotion?
No.
Alright, but it sounded like, try to keep it light here, guys, you know? I think that would cover it.
Closest to holidays.
I think that would cover it.
Uh, so roll call, vote on this for approving, Larry?
Yes.
Uh, Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
Pete?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Hey, so all set? Early release days.
So we just wanted to come back around, we had talked in uh, when we reopened school about maintaining early release days. And the board uh, hasn't, hasn't really had another discussion about it and they're due to expire. The feeling of the administration and staff is very strong that we need to continue the early release Wednesdays. Uh, it, it, there's just a lot going on in the schools with regard to um, COVID tracing, professional development, issues that we're facing with all the different kids coming in and out of classrooms. So we have assigned through the MOAs remote support for K six. But our seven through 12 teachers are still doing synchronous instruction. And we have set up some uh, support staff for the students who are remote to help them, but it isn't taking the impact off the teacher's instructions. So we are asking the board to continue the early release days. Uh, we could just do it for another six weeks or until February break and then reassess. I, certainly our hope is that, that, you know, things will eventually get back to normal. But a lot of districts have been actually having four days of instruction, two days in person with one group, two days in, in, in person with another group, and then a fifth day off full remote for the whole district. We have our kids all day, every day, and the early release days have made a, a significant difference. Patty, if you'd like to add anything, we're basically just asking you to extend it uh, um, for as long as you feel comfortable. I'm fine with doing it for, until the pandemic is over, but if you want to reassess it, you know, at a clear breaking point, a clear breaking point, February break. Patty, did you want to talk about it?
Well, I, I absolutely think you've covered everything that um, needs to be said because it's just, it's it's, it's funny because I've been talking to a lot of educators in the district just this week and all of us are looking at each other going, how is it not already Friday? There were just so many things going on it during the course of the day for teachers that we just, we've got students on a revolving door. We're trying to make sure that we're supporting them. We are having increasing amounts of students having to quarantine, which requires a different type of preparation for the kids who are home compared to the kids who are in school. Then they come back to class, you've got to catch them up, there's just a lot of preparation and work that needs to be done. And there are also um, conversations that need to be had about where the students are as we're getting back some of our data. We just finished our NWEA testing, those letters are going to be going home to families after the break. Um, trying to make sure that we're, we're getting them back on track. So I think that anything that we could do to support our teachers and everything that they're doing to keep our kids learning and to, to provide that stability that they, they desperately need um, would be really, really appreciated and would be definitely put to good use.
Word comment?
Can we get a motion in a second before we comment, Jim?
Okay, all right, how about a motion to approve the uh, extend, the early release days through uh, February to February break?
Second.
All right, any comments? I, I can, I can see that um, with a hundred and forty-five kids on uh, quarantine, there's a lot of layers to this complexity and I can see that that part, part of the day would, would make a difference. Jamie?
Yeah, I'll get slated in my mail, but that's okay. I, I, I think it totally makes sense, the we've had our ups and downs as a district in trying to manage through this pandemic. We've had um, friction points, we've had uh, quarantines, we've had cases, we've had people being in, we, we've got remote, we've gone for uh, synchronous, uh, people need time to get it as right as we can get it, you know, with this, and, and I, I, I would support doing this, I would support, supporting the teachers to have the time in order to get these these sessions the way they need to be to get the best benefit that we can while we're going through this craziness.
Anybody else, Dawn?
Yeah, I, I agree as well, um, I have a friend that is a teacher in another district. Um, and she's teaching both in-person and uh, remote students. And I see the toll it's taking on her um, firsthand. Um, and so I know our teachers are in the same boat that she's in. Um, so I think if we can do something to help support them, to give them more prep time, because they are trying to create two different lesson plans when they're teaching for two different groups of kids. Um, I, I think we need to allow them that time to be able to do that so that our students can be, you know, they, they can get what they need from the teachers and the teachers have the time to do it appropriately.
Okay, if there's no further comments, we'll call a vote, starting with Larry?
Yeah. That's a yes.
Tammy? Okay, Jamie?
Hi.
Dawn?
Yes.
And Charlie?
Hi.
And yes for me as well.
Can I vote?
Oh yeah, go ahead, Pete.
That's okay, you know, I understand, you know.
It's getting darker in your room there, I missed you.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm gonna vote on the affirmative.
Okay, thank you. Uh, update on middle school door installation, Matt?
Okay, so now that we know where the door's gonna go, we're, we're drafting up the design plan, sending it off to the state for approval. We're gonna be taking out the uh, the lockers over Christmas break. So that's gonna, it's gonna start moving as soon as possible and you should see the doors fairly quickly. We do have all the supplies in-house to uh, to get it done, so it, it's gonna go, it's gonna happen very quickly.
Right, I, I think it's also, oh, I'm sorry, can I just add one thing?
Yeah.
Uh, we had a lot of discussions about disruption, instruction and what to do. And I just want to be clear for everyone in the public, we, we went back and forth about what to do. There will be two classrooms from the high school that are on technically the middle school side of the door. And I know it seems ridiculous to put the door in and let high school kids go over. But it really did not feel good to move the teachers because it wasn't just moving those two teachers somewhere else, it disrupted five classrooms. It, it has to do with science labs and where classes need to be and the way things work. So we've come to the conclusion that we're going to build the wall, put the doors in. But we are going to allow high school students to go to their classes for the remainder of this school year. That will stop for next year. It doesn't make any sense to build the door twice. And it doesn't make sense to disrupt five or six teachers and move all their classes in the middle of a pandemic when they're already struggling just to keep, keep everything floating. Um, so I just didn't, I want to be very transparent about it, that we looked at all the options. We worked really hard about it, with it, and we talked with staff, staff were collaborative. Everyone is willing to do whatever they can, but people are so overwhelmed right now that moving was just too much. So we decided not to do that.
So these classes are just one room each inside this, these doors, right?
Yeah, you just walk through the door and go in your classroom and the, the.
They're gonna be roaming in the halls.
They're not gonna be roaming in the halls and the teachers at the middle school are keeping an eye on the hallways in between classes. They're, they're not worried about it at all. This is apparent, apparent perception thing, which I understand. We said that we were gonna put the door in, we haven't put it in yet, we need to do what we said we would do, it's a credibility issue. But the teachers on the second floor of the middle school are not reporting any problems there. The one problem that we're having with the middle school kids in the high school is that the middle school kids occasionally choose to go to the bathroom in the high school gang bathrooms, even though they've been told not to. And they have a brand-new $200,000 bathroom in their wing. They're kids, we have to manage them and we have to work with them, but I want to be very clear about what the problem really is. The problem is that kids are curious and they're doing something they're not supposed to. And the adults are managing it and I haven't heard boo about it for three weeks, I haven't heard a single complaint. Christine DeRocher is right on top of things and the teachers are too. And I think that once they realized what was happening, they got right on it. I haven't heard a word in a month. So I just don't want to bring up old, you know, skeletons out of the closet or something, but I also want to be transparent that, that I, I didn't feel. But I also want to be transparent that, that I, I didn't feel right disrupting five classrooms at the high school for just a few, you know, for another five months when, when we're going to be all set for next year.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Tom, budget?
Yeah, I, I think this, Tammy, Tammy, feel free to chime in here. We, I just need you all to make, you know, to decide, are you going to ratify the budget that the Budcom adopted, which was $2,000 lower than the default budget? And an increase of roughly, I'm using Tom Ambrose math, not me, Mad Angel math, but he'll give you the exact figure. It was roughly a $39,000 increase. I, I'm certainly saying that, that, you know, we, they wanted that money to be put toward a paraprofessional. And I think it's important to recognize that, that we should make the decision about how the money is spent. If we want to allocate it to special education, it will not increase the default budget. So, but it's up to the school board as to who, how we spend the money. And Matt and Tammy, feel free, I know Matt's got some information to share with all of you. I, I certainly felt like it was a lively conversation with the Budcom and trying to be nice to him. It was a long and tricky meeting, for sure, but we got there, and so here we are.
So Tammy, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to clarify. They actually added money for two items, $3,000. They wanted to go for SO Rock, Southern Rockingham County Services, and then the remainder, which was more like $50,000 toward a para at the Bakersfield School, I believe that was.
Matt has the exact numbers for us, Tammy?
Yeah.
Can I just say a quick thing? SO Rock is really important, and I was really glad that the Budcom brought that up. I just want to thank the Budcom, and I do truly support that motion.
Okay. Let me jump in and try to give you out all the numbers. Okay, the first thing is, is that the, the school board has voted to approve the default budget When we actually do the report, it's rounded up to, to round it up. The operating budget that was approved by the school board and presented to the budget committee was $35,470,284.28. The budget committee increased that amount to $35,525,941.94, which is a $55,657.66 increase. Now, it's my understanding that the school board can recommend where the, the money goes. It is, I'm sorry, it is, it's my understanding that the budget committee can make a recommendation of where the budget goes. It is the school board that decides where it ends in the budget, okay? So the recommendation that administration is making is to add the $55,000 to, and I'll give you the account number. It's 10-12-10-19-53300-0-70, and then five zeros. And it's other professional services for special education. And that increase would not affect the default budget. Oh, there was one other point. Yeah, so they can make a recommendation to put $3,000 for SO Rock and, and for a particular, I'm sorry, a position. However, it is really this board's responsibility to make that determination. So when you make your motion to back this budget, I'm hoping that you also can let us know, or administration know, whether you approve that line item. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna, for the purpose of discussion, I'm gonna ask for a motion to add the $55,657.66 to our budget proposal.
So moved.
Second.
Right. And any comments?
Move the motion.
Jamie?
Well, you had a chance. Nobody said anything.
Yeah, so. Tammy or Jamie?
Tammy can go, by all means.
Oh, um, so I'm with, I'm, I'm fine, I suppose, with adding that. And I have, I have a concern about the proposed budget and the default budget being so close together. I recall a few years ago, it was a while ago, but the, the budget, both budgets were the same amount, which I know isn't the situation. It's pretty close. And people were very unhappy about that. They, they really kind of wanted choice, and it, it feels manipulative, I think, to the, to the electorate to have these numbers be so close together. I just have some concerns. I would hate for them to take their unhappiness out on the teachers' contracts if they can't kind of vote against our budget, vote for it. I'm just gonna throw that out there.
Yep, go ahead.
The numbers are the numbers. I mean, we, we, you know, we, we, we put the numbers together and they fall where they may. And, and I think we've been, I hate to use these terms, transparent in how we put the budget together. And if people are against it, then they haven't been watching these, these, these sessions we've been through. I mean, we have been, you know, really, how do I put it? Friendly competition with each other about what should go into budget, what shouldn't, and what, you know. So, you know, the, the numbers are where they are, and, and the people have to understand. And, you know, so, I mean, that, that's, I, I understand your perception. I, I'm very big on perception, but, you know, we, we were damn hot putting this together, and, and people come telling me, how come it's the same? How come it's close? Because we're trying to run a $35 million company. That's what we're trying to do here. And they, they should have watched us and seen how we were friendly adversaries at times.
Jamie?
Yeah, I mean, my, a lot of my comments are very similar to Tammy's. So my, my inclination is to support our budget. The the reality is, and I hear what Pete's saying, but the reality is most of the people that are going to be voting in March don't watch these videos, and they don't know or how we've worked or what we're looking at. And, you know, we have seen in the past, when they were this close together, that people have simply selected the default. And I think in one case, the default was actually higher. They selected the default, just because they're used to selecting the default. So there, there's, there is some risk to Tammy's point. And, and my concern, my primarily concern would be the same as Tammy's. Does, does that make somebody then say, well, then they act with the contract?
So are you proposing that, that it should be, do you, I'm just curious. Oh, I'm sorry, Jim, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I, I was just trying to understand. Tammy and Jamie, do you feel like if it was a little bit lower, that it would kind of give people pause to? What we're really talking about is people making a decision in the moment between two numbers that are very, very close. And we know that the operating budget aligns our resources to the district needs very clearly. Whereas the, we really don't want the default budget. So I just keep saying that. I don't ever want the default budget. If we get it, we get it. Even if it's more, it's not what we want. What we want is the budget that we've put together. But do you think that we need to lower it a little bit to differentiate some more? Or do you feel like it's, it's part of, it's just educational? I, I was just curious. Matt has his hand up, Jim?
Oh, go ahead, Matt.
It's my understanding that this is the number that's going to go before the taxpayers. So there's no modifying the budget now. It's, it's, where is this money going to go? As Pete said, it's the, the numbers are the numbers. I think that what we can do best is to recommend what, to the taxpayers, what is the best option for the district, which we said, or we recommend the operating budget.
Jamie?
Yeah, and, and maybe Tammy has a better answer than this to me. But I think, and maybe I'm wrong, that if we changed the, so let's just say to Tom's point, if we said it's not 35, 525, and it's just different by 2,000, it's actually 35, 517, and different by 10 to make it more, I think the Budcom could still make that determination. If they didn't, then their budget would go before the, the public, I believe, is how that would work. So I just want to, to make sure that I'm clear on that. Tom, to, to your original question, I'm just, in my mind, there is going to be a heavy lift with the contract in, in the year that we've just been through and with the finances that people have had to deal with. And where there was a differential, then there's, there's a sense that the, the, geez, they actually came in below the default. You know, it's the ones that aren't paying attention in terms of, haven't been watching this and, and aren't aware of the details, they could say, oh, I see they came in below the default. They're trying. If they're right next to each other, you, you, you might trigger different activity. That's, that's my biggest concern.
Thank you for clarifying. I just wasn't sure. So Matt, is the process that the board here could adopt, they could say, oh, I'm sorry, Tammy, I didn't realize you had your hand up?
So, yeah, is that, yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'm not muted, am I? Okay, so just to clarify, this budget, this number that we're discussing, obviously, we're going to pass that back to the budget committee. They are going to, that will be the number that they will present at the public hearing. And if they decide to take that number, they will present it at the deliberative session. Change there, so it's not, this number's not necessarily going to be the number that goes on the warrant. But if our options, we have two options, if I'm not mistaken. We can try to lower our, you know, the, but the proposed budget number and recommend that to the budget committee. Or we do, don't we have the option of putting money into a category that would in fact increase the default budget?
I, I think.
You don't increase it to fall.
I think increasing the default budgets just to make a difference visually between the two numbers is just kind of a shell game, but.
You can't do that. That.
The default budget is set by statute. If I remember correctly, Matt, it's last year's minus one-time expenses plus debt services and bonds. And I think that's it, right? Is, did I miss one?
Yeah, if, if you, if you remove any staff, they come off the default.
Well, that's the new change. Yeah, that's a change from last year or so. If you eliminate a position, that comes off.
Right, but if we add a position back in, then it goes back up.
Right, right.
Right?
I'm sorry? What's your question?
What the budget committee asked us to do. If we say we, yes, we're going to take that staffing position and put it back into our budget, that should raise the default back.
No, no, that'll, that'll raise, that will raise, in my understanding, that will raise this year's budget and then next year's default budget, but it won't change this year's default budget because it's set by statute.
Matt?
Yeah, Matt, am I right on that?
Um, you're all pretty much right.
A while since I went through chapter 32, sorry.
That's what I call the Bill Clinton move, right? Pretty much right.
Okay, I did a lot of research on this today, and the budget can be modified all the way up to the budget hearing, which is January 14th, okay? So even though the school board has voted on the default budget, it has the opportunity to amend it up to that date, okay? So the, to Tammy's point, if you add in a position that was cut out in the default budget, it's also added in proportionally in the operating budget. So essentially, one is going to follow the other, and you're gonna, you're, you're stuck again where you're within a couple thousand dollars from each other.
That's what I thought. Goes on both ends.
That's right, Charlie.
But, but we're, but we haven't done it on the other end. We've only, we've only added into the operating budget. The default budget is still the same as what it was when we set it. We haven't added that staff position back into the default, which should raise it back up.
Yeah, if you add the position back to the default, aren't you also adding it to the operating budget?
We've already done that, though. That's the number the budget committee voted on. It's in there.
The budget committee can't add positions to, to the budget.
That's why we're talking about it. But that's the money that they, the money that they put in the budget is the number that we're talking about.
Okay, I think we understand. We understand your point.
Okay.
So then it comes down to, do we want to increase the default or don't we?
Right.
So I just want to clarify because I, I think that Tammy is correct that the Budcom added money to the budget. That's the amount that Matt just read. When they added money to the budget, they can't allocate what it's for. But if we allocate, if you allocate it in this meeting for a previously existing position, it will increase the default. So if you add back a para that we cut for this year, then that does increase the default and would create a roughly, and I'm using Tom math, $50,000 deficit between the default budget and the adopted budget. What Matt was saying to you tonight is, if you don't want to increase the default budget, you can add the money to the line that he read, and it will not increase the default budget because it's not bringing back a previously reduced position. So the question for the board tonight, I need two motions. The first motion is, are we going to accept the amount or, or support the amount that the Budcom proposed and be united? The second question is, where do you want that money allocated? Do you want it allocated to returning a staff member that previously existed so that it increases the default? Or do you want it allocated to the account that Matt read so that the default does not get increased? One other option is to lower the amount and send it back to the Budcom tomorrow night, right? And then just go back to them. I mean, that is an option on, I'm just trying to, there's three options. Accept the amount, reduce the amount. I mean, you could even say now, we're just not doing, we don't want, we don't, we don't agree with this, and we're gonna have the Budcom have their budget, and the board's gonna have their budget, and then it gets really fun. So.
You don't want to do that.
No, we don't want to do, I don't recommend that to you as a team. I, I'm recommending that you, that you, that you, I think that the Budcom being a couple thousand lower than the default is a good idea. Guys, we're talking about a 30, 36, almost $36 million budget, and we're talking about, you know, $50,000 that you may or may not choose to spend for next year. Putting it in the budget or allocating it does not guarantee that we as a district have to spend it. So if you want, if you really want to play, if you really want to play this carefully, my recommendation to you would be to accept the Budcom's proposed budget and then add it to add back in a position and let it increase the default by some money, and then let it play out at the deliberative. Because even if we get the money at the polls, we don't have to spend it. So it's, it's, there's a point where we're just in a washing machine over a very relatively, it, it's not a small sum of money to any of us personally, but in the face of a 35 and, 35.5 million dollar budget, it's not a huge sum at this time.
All right, Dawn had her hand up.
So I guess, so I, I completely agree with everything Tammy was saying. The budget, I watched the budget committee meeting, and it was, there was a lot of discussion. And it was, at the end of the meeting, it was very clear that they wanted to add back one paraprofessional, and that's why they chose the amount of money they put in there. Where this line, I know it says administration, but I don't know where that comes in because that's not what the budget committee was saying. So I know it doesn't go against the default budget, but that's not what was recommended to us. So I'm just trying to understand why we're going round and round here. I, I mean, I know why, but I just, I don't know why we're talking about something that was not recommended by the budget committee, and we're going, kind of taking a left here.
Also, the amount of money that they ended up adding in was not, not a full. Also, the amount of money that they ended up adding in was not, not a full position. It was a partial position.
Yeah.
Um, okay, Pete.
Yeah, I, I, I think the confusion is that the Budget Committee mentioned a position. They shouldn't have mentioned that position. We determined positions. They should have simply kept the money. They shouldn't have said, so they can add a position. They, 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 that confused it. That's why we need two motions. We need a motion for the position and a motion for the money. But it kind of got mucked up when they started using the word, we want to add the money for that position. Okay? And I think that's what's confusing us a little bit, too.
Tom?
I, yes, I, uh, uh, I, I think that, that I just wanted to say a similar thing to Dawn is that typically the Budcom just adds an amount of money. They don't give, they can give a recommendation for what it's for, but, but that doesn't, the board has to choose what it's for. So the Budcom has no, no purview over the way the budget is spent. That is solely in, in the hands of the school board. So we have to discuss the amount and then where it's allocated decides whether or not it would show up in the default on.
Right, and I understand that. I guess I was just confused as to why this other area was put in.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's because the, it was just, it was an area that we could then allocate later. So Matt looked for an area that, that of the budget that it could be placed so that we could allocate it based on student need. Jody, Jody had some ideas during the budgeting process, but I don't want to get into the weeds of what the money would be for right now because we have another meeting and, and, and we're, we're two minutes over. So I just, I don't want to, I want to, um, I don't want to, uh, um, you know, I, I, I think right now we need to settle on an amount. And we can discuss the what it's for later, but if you want it to go in the default, then we need to add it for a position that we cut. That's the only way it gets added to the default.
That, that's why, that's why, yeah, because
Hey, wait your turn, hey, we got it. Jamie's next.
Yeah.
So here's what I, I think on a couple of items. One is we have a motion on the floor, so there is a motion on the floor that is to recommend, I believe, if I remember the motion properly, it was to go ahead and put it in the account that Matt said and, 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 and adopt the budget in that manner. And that was seconded and that's what we, I think we're discussing for a proposal.
Just to interrupt you, Jamie, I made the motion and it was just to add the fifty-five, the amount. It wasn't, we didn't specify how to add it.
But, okay, but, but if you don't specify, so the motion is not to specify that it's an added head.
Right.
Don't specify that it's an added head. It doesn't change it all. So here, and, and then you'd have to put it into account. So here, here's my thought process on it. I would not support changing the default in this manner to make a differential. I, I would consider that if I'm a voter, you guys are playing games here.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and I don't like the smell of that at all. And I think that's a worse smell for when I'm a voter making the decision as to whether I'm going to do anything for the contract or not. So I, I wouldn't support that. I would point out something that came back to Dawn's discussion that we had in the meeting where she pitched. And she pitched for a, uh, additional speech pathologist, pathologist. Tom said that that was a very tough one for Jody. And if, if she had to do something, that's where she would go. Um, the Budcom had lots of discussions about speech pathology, pathology. I don't know where we're going to be next year. I also don't want to see a situation where we have one budget and they have another. I prefer to stick with our budget. Be, be what it may. People don't like it. That, that is too bad. Um, but what I would say is if we can get everybody on board to a, all right, we put the money in, we accommodate what the Budcom said, we leave it to the administration to decide what, where and if they're going to need it by putting it in as the motion has been given, that resolves the default perspective of it. The money is there and they will either use it in these, uh, in this account that Matt is having, other professional services. They can either be used for a para. It can be used for a speech pathologist. It can be used for where they deem it's necessary. We are then accommodating a Budcom position to allow for some unanimity with the, with the Budcom. And we're, we're, we're not, I don't want to be, personally, I don't want, I don't want to be seen manipulating the default. And when we had that discussion last time, I got on my high horse a little bit. God forbid. Um, I know, I might support the pathologist, but I'm not going to support it for putting that back in the, in the default budget because I didn't think that that was the right way to go then and I still don't think that's the right way to go. But I would support, even though I kind of disagree with it, I would, I would support taking their number to get some, some, um, unanimity with the, with the Budcom on this and leaving the discretion to the administration as to where and if it's needed by putting it, by leaving the, the motion the way you just set, you stated it, Jim. If it's not tied to a, a, a position, then it doesn't increase the default.
Okay, um, anybody else? Yep, Larry.
Well, one of the things that is really a problem is that you do not want to have two budgets to present to the public. Because, um, this could be a major problem. I do not like the idea of us putting money back into the budget after we said we have an X number of dollars and that's all we need to run the school this year. I, I think I have to go along and say that as far as I'm concerned, I think we should stick with the budget that we started with and hold to that and explain to the Budget Committee that this is the budget that was determined that we need. And there's no reason to increase more money than what was originally told to the public and to everybody. Uh, again, the Budget Committee does not have the right to say where they want the money to go. That is not their concern. That's ours. And if it comes to voting, I think I would have to vote no against the additional money.
Any, any further discussion? All right, I'm going to move the motion, uh, to increase the budget by fifty-five thousand, our budget by fifty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. And we had a second. Who was the second?
Yep, Ben.
Dawn, okay.
I think I was.
All right. Uh, so we're going to call for a vote. Larry, you're first up on my screen.
No.
Okay. Uh, Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And I think we've lost Charlie.
Oh, no. Yeah.
Charlie, you there? All right, I'm, I'm a yes as well. What's that?
I was just asking Daniel, is Charlie in the waiting room or something?
No, and he did seem to drop out. And I don't have him in the waiting. I also don't have Jim either.
Yeah, I'm, I'll work on that in a minute. We, I got him.
I know, maybe Charlie, I know Charlie was connected by his phone. Maybe it died. Um, okay, I'm a, I'm a yes also. Now, as far as where we put the money, is that something we want, we feel you want to decide tonight or how do you want to approach that?
I don't know if you need to. I'll, I'll defer to Matt.
Uh, Jamie?
Yeah, I mean, we just voted to increase spending. We did not vote to increase a position. So there is change in the default. If we're going to have another motion to change the default, then I'll be having
No, no.
To that, to reverse my decision.
No, thanks, Jamie. Just clarify for the public because I think that they're confused or could be confused because I'm feeling a little confused. Um, Matt, Matt had recommended an account that would be a placeholder. Um, but it didn't align it to a specific person. So the question was, it, can he put, can he use that account, which is a special education account? And I, I certainly support that because I think that that's the appropriate location for the money.
Yes.
Um, but if you want to, if you don't want to do that tonight, that's fine. But Matt, Matt, I think you need an account to put the money in, right?
Yeah, that's correct. And, um, I just also want to let the board know that if we do use the money, um, it's going to be a budget transfer that's going to go before the Finance Committee. If we're going to be hiring a, a paraprofessional, it's going to be, uh, an additional, um, position that's going to go before the Personnel Committee. So there's going to be a lot of transparency with using these funds. That's
Yeah, Pete, go ahead.
Yeah, let's get it behind us. We, 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 we know what we're talking about now. We know where the money's going to go. Let's put the money into the account. And we know the only reason we're going to spend, in my opinion, the only reason to spend it, if we need a para, then we're going to use that money. It's going to be checks and balances all the way through between the Finance and the Personnel Committee. Um, let, let's, let's just get on with it and let's not put something else on our plate for another meeting.
Okay. Uh, Jamie?
I, I moved that we assign the amount that we just approved to the account number provided by Matt.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, um.
Dawn's got her hand up.
Oh, Dawn, sorry.
I just wanted to say, um, that I think, I think the money can be used, you know, however is appropriate. And I think that was, I know ultimately in the end, they, the Budget Committee made a recommendation for what they were thinking the money wanted to go for. Uh, but there were, like Jamie said, a lot of things that they discussed. Um, so I think that this account, it's a ten dash one, two, one, zero, dash, one, nine, dash, five, three, three, zero, zero, dash, zero, seven, zero, blah, blah, blah. Um, this account here will allow us to support the students in the way that I believe the Budget Committee was hoping to. Uh, it may not be specifically the one area, but there were kind of a lot of areas in that, that were discussed. So I think this will be able to support them. Um, so thank you, everybody. It supports what I was trying to also possibly, um, if Jody doesn't need it, what I was trying to accomplish as well. So I support this.
Okay. Um, so we've got a yes vote from Larry, a yes vote from Dawn. Um, I just saw the cat of, the tail of Tammy's cat.
So that's a yes.
But Tammy, you're, you're, Tammy, you're next.
Wait a minute, just, I think you abstained.
Yes.
Okay, Jamie?
Hi.
And Pete?
Yes.
And it's yes for me.
Um, can I make one more comment about the default budget?
No.
Shut up.
Sign it, okay?
What's that?
SAU, the, the default budget is at the, is at the SAU. Can you go, please see Phyllis and sign for me?
You're going to send the dog sleds for me?
Okay, sure.
Friday. Just do it on Friday.
I was there today. I could have just done it then.
Yeah, there's no rush. We have until the fourteenth of January to get
Oh, yeah, just do it after break. Don't worry about it.
So it's
Yeah. Matt, Matt, be quiet. We need to move on.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh,
Need to sign it?
That's, that's it for the, the next meeting is, um, Wednesday, January sixth, twenty twenty-one at six P M. At the library, the Sanborn Regional High School with a public hearing on donations to begin at six thirty P M. If the board has any agenda items they'd like to get in, please get it in by the Thursday before. The next Budcom committee meeting will be held remotely on Thursday, December seventeenth. That's tomorrow night, twenty twenty at seven P M. And the links for these meetings are W W W S A U seventeen dot net. So I guess we have a non-public now. Is that correct?
Uh, we
No.
You're in this meeting, but stay on the call. We have a
Okay.
It's complicated. We have a non-
The meetings, the meeting is adjourned.
Okay, great. So Jim, Baker?
Yeah, um, so we need to have a motion to ratify
Mr. Chairman.
Huh?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we have, that we approve the ratification of the negotiated committee's negotiation of, of the meeting. Yeah. Did it all.
We need
How about, how about the collective bargaining agreement between the professional staff and school district?
With both, uh, ratifications of both, uh, groups.
Do we do them separately?
No, do them together.
You can do them together, but can you just say which groups they are? One is the Administrators Union.
One is, uh, okay. I move that we ratify
You can't, you can't have two.
Yeah, do, do
You have to do one at a time.
Yeah, do one at a time, please.
Yep.
All right, let's see. I move that we ratify the negotiation contract that was approved by the negotiating committee for the teachers.
Second.
All right.
So just for the record, I just, I would say the professional staff collective bargaining agreement.
Yeah.
Yes.
Professional staff bargaining agreement.
Yeah.
All right. You got that, Jim?
Yeah, so I'm going to say ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the professional staff and the school district.
That's it.
Okay.
And Peter approved it. Seconded.
I seconded it.
Okay, so, um, all in favor of that, Larry?
Have a discussion first.
Yeah, okay. Any discussion? Thank you. Jamie?
I, I think we should probably give a summary, right, for the people watching at home or first time.
We're in a non-public.
And we're going to vote on it?
We're in a non-public right now.
We're in non-public. We don't have to.
Oh, we're a non-public still. Okay, I thought
We're, no, no, we are in public now.
I'll give a brief, I'll give a brief summary. And if anyone from at home would like to read the documents or see what the, the changes are, we can provide them with a copy. Um, essentially the, the, there have been some, some, some language changes that include changes to the, um, uh, the stipends and the way that stipends occur. There's been a small increase in the stipends that's congruent with the salary increases. Um, and it, uh, we also did, uh, uh, we did, we did talk about the riffing language and that has been rectified. Um, and in addition to that, the, the group, the, the board and the, um, the teachers' union have agreed on raises of one point five percent in year one, two percent in year two, and two percent in year three, uh, including steps. So that's the gen, the general summary of what's in the contract.
Anybody else?
We could vote.
Okay, so, uh, vote to approve, starting with Larry.
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
Pete?
Yes.
Uh, Dawn?
Yes.
And yes for myself.
Chairman, I move that we ratify the contract with the administration group.
What else?
Second.
Fine.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'll do another brief summary.
Yeah.
Yep. So, uh, uh, this, this group did not have hardly any language changes. The administrators asked for clarification around the, the district's contribution to annual dues for professional groups, but there was no increase in cost. Uh, in that language, it, uh, basically just more memorializes the, the contribution to dues annually and caps it at an amount of twenty-five hundred per administrator. Um, and that is congruent with what we've always done. Uh, the, uh, the salary increases, the administrators do not receive steps, which is important for the community to know. Uh, the administrators only receive a straight increase and they did negotiate a one point five percent increase for this year and two point seven five for an additional three years. Um, and that's pretty much all this agreement was. There was not a lot of language conversations.
Two point seven five each year for another, for additional three years.
Yes, it's important to note that the administrators work with their union to cap their healthcare costs to offset the raises. So in year one at one point five percent, their healthcare is capped at point, uh, I'm sorry, at four percent. And in years two, three, and four, it's capped at a point, uh, uh, I'm sorry, a six percent increase. So, um, the, their union has agreed to limit the increase in cost for their health insurance in return for some of the salaries.
Okay, any additional discussion or comments? All right, uh, voting, uh, starting with Larry?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
Pete?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And yes for myself. So now we need to go into a non-public session, uh, Jamie?
Yeah, be, before we go, uh, I just want to make a couple of points. Uh, one is people should take note that, uh, in this year of COVID, the first year that we're coming into, uh, in both of these agreements, you're looking at a one point five percent increase. I think there has been acknowledgement, uh, by both the teachers and the administration and the board of the difficulty that we're in from a community perspective. And, and I think that the, the limiting of the, the raising to one point five percent, um, is a demonstration of the recognition of, of what the community has, has gone through, and I, I just wanted to make sure that that was said.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so we need to go into non-public. Larry, do you want to call us into that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into non-public session for RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, Roman numeral two, C E N L.
Okay.
Second.
Second, Tammy, thank you. Um, Larry?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And yes for myself. Okay, so Pete, you had a motion, I believe?
Oh, no, that's Larry's job.
No, no, that's yours on this one.
I've got, I've got it if we, okay. I move that we accept early retirement as discussed in the non-public.
Second.
And, um, any discussion? Okay, Larry?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Yes for me. I believe that's it.
Do we need to seal minutes?
Everybody.
Do we need to seal minutes?
Chairman, I, no, we don't, because that was with the lawyer.
No, no, no.
No, the.
The second one? All right, Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes be sealed in perpetuity.
Second.
All right, uh, Larry?
Yes.
Best of the non-public minutes?
Yes.
Yeah. Tammy?
Yes.
Yeah, Jamie?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And yes for me. I believe that's it, right? Anything else? Okay, meeting's adjourned.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year's, all love you.
Hold on, Tom? We didn't give Jamie a chance to ask one more question.
Is it okay if I have a beer now?
Wait, we need a motion, we need a motion on that.
Great to see you guys. Have a merry.